Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 1st, 2016 Regular Planning Board Meeting of the City of Laconia. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:30, and Kalina Graham will be our recording secretary for this evening. Would you please call the roll?
Mike Delavickian?
Here.
Jay Tivlin?
Present.
David Bowns?
Here.
David Denial?
Here.
Hamilton McLean?
Here.
And Chair Hutchins.
Thank you very much, and we at our table have, in addition, our current Planning Director, Shannon Saunders, and thank God for our Assistant Director, Brandy Loughlin, who will be with us. Let's see, doo-doo-doo-doo, enough of the sarcasm. We do have a quorum, it takes five voters, and because of the members that are not here, if, Mike and Mike, if you would vote with us this evening, that gives us over five. There are no presentations. We'll move right into extensions. In case anyone, I know there isn't anyone in the audience, but later on, we'll be accepting a application for provincial road, a two-lot subdivision, and if anyone is watching and waiting to hear all of this, it's just a procedural thing where we accept the application, and there'll be no discussion of it this evening, other than accepting the application. Well, why don't we move, we can't move into Fallsout here. The Watermark Marine. Why don't we just continue with the agenda, and we can circle back to him when he does get here. He generally makes his own presentations. On a continued public hearing, application PL 2015-0138 SP, 153 Church Street, proposal to demolish vacant building and add landscaping in its place. The applicant has asked for a continuance until our April meeting to bring forward, but they have acquired the property, and they have acquired a demolition permit.
Exactly, yep.
And so you may very well see the building demolished between now and then. It would be totally up to them as to when it will happen. And then in April, we'll be addressing their plans for what to do with the site. Hey, Edwin.
There's another chair right over here. Oh, right there.
Then under, then we'll move into, runs here, public hearings. Application PL 2016-0004 SU, 93 and 109 Weers Boulevard. It's for a boundary line adjustment. This application was accepted last month, so we can move right into the public hearing, and I declare the public hearing open at 6:33. And Mr. Johnson, representing the applicant, will make a presentation.
For the record, my name is Ron Johnson. I prepared that plan for the 109 Weers Boulevard nominee trust, which is Raymond and Mary Ann LaValle, the owners. Property is located on the east side of Weers Boulevard. There are two existing lots of record. They're in the CR and RR1 zones. The bulk of the property is in the CR zone. It's known as 93 and 109 Weers Boulevard. Both lots are owned by the same individuals or the same trust. And actually, the lot behind it, which goes up and borders on White Oaks Road, is owned by the same trust. So they own quite a bit of property altogether, but in three different lots. 93, which is the first lot on the right going towards the Weers, has a single-family residence on it, and number 109 has a cabin colony known as Rich Haven Cottages. The purpose of this plan is to adjust the boundaries between the two properties, is basically to transfer 13,066 square feet from the 109 Weers Boulevard to 93 Weers Boulevard, which is the cabin colony, to the single-family residence, or the larger lot to the smaller. Along with the transfer land of land, there are two cottages being transferred, number 93. Cottages number eight and 12. They were constructed fairly recently. The others are vintage cottages. They've been there for probably 50 years or more. The reason for this is 109 Weers Boulevard, the Rich Haven Cottages, is for sale, and they wanted to keep the two cottages on their single-family residence lot for family use. There's basically no new lots being created. The two existing lots of record, density requirements are met. There were issues with well and sewer, and we need easements, cross-easements to provide services to both lots when one of the lots is sold. They're both in the same title, so they can't easements across their own property at this point. The planning department has requested that we do a draft of an easement deed, so we're going to prepare that and deliver it when it's due. I think that's probably about it. It's a fairly simple transfer. The little piece in yellow, which is 13,066 square feet, is being transferred from the norally property to the southerly property. Small, small piece of land.
I have a question. On one of our notes here on a memo from Luke Powell, it talks about having, needing to, if you get to, need to get to Lot 8, you have to go through Lot 7? Is there an easement for that, or a different access?
We put a note on the plan, the driveway to access 8 and 12, okay, which is...
Cottage is 8 and 12, not Lot 8 and 12.
There's a loop driveway right now. The single-family is right here, and there's a driveway that comes in here, and there's another driveway that comes in that serves as the cottages. When this is done, and this is transferred or conveyed at some point, this access to these two cottages, which is now on this lot after this boundary line adjustment is approved, will be relocated onto that lot. So there will be no access across this lot to gain access to that, or those two cottages, 8 and 12.
Okay, okay.
I think that's what his concern was.
Thank you.
Does that more or less lock things up for that lot, that with these three properties on it, they really can't be addressing it for any other use in the future or anything?
Density-wise?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's getting pretty close to food density and green space.
Does any board member have any other questions at this time to the applicant? Staff review? Brandy?
So by moving the lot lines to include those two units in with that single-family home, it does meet the zoning requirements for density and setbacks and all of those other criteria. A number of easements will be required, and they're outlined in the staff review. Under Plan Revision Easement, so in the staff recommendation number two, we did require that we, that an easement for access to those units at least be drawn up in the case that, you know, just in case that driveway is not extended up, so that you can access those two units across the land that they're on now. A sewer easement will be required, because those two units now receive sewer by lines that cross the cottage colony parcel. The well that serves the cottage colony is currently right next to the single-family home, so an easement is required for that. And then there are private water lines from that well that cross the cottage colony that will service those two units that will now be on the single-family lot. So there's a lot of easements that will be in place, but they've all been spelled out, and we've talked to Ron, and they're aware that we're going to need drafts of those with their final plans.
Do those easements include responsibilities in that if the line breaks or something like that, who's responsible for it? Or is it just that they don't, that's between, it's a civil matter between the...
That's right.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Any questions to the staff about this? Okay. I don't see, but are there any butters that would just talk to the board about this application? None? Any other taxpayers of the City of Laconia like to talk to the Planning Board about this issue, application? None, none, none? Then I will close the public hearing at 6:39. Are there any, is there any discussion before we move to a motion stage?
So there's no other adjustments that have to be done, that have to be spelled out?
Not other than those easements that we would recommend.
Then hearing other discussion, I would entertain a motion to, a motion on this application?
I'll move that, let's see, let's see if I can see it. Application PL 2016-0004 SU, which is 93, 109 Weers Boulevard, be approved with Plan Revision Easements due April 5th, 2016. Site Improvement Security not applicable. Mylar and Final Plans, May 3rd, 2016, completion on March 7th, 2017. That's number one recommendation. Number two, A. Number three, A. Number five, A through D.
Is there a reason that it's not a number four?
The formatting skips number four, and I forgot to fix it.
Oh, okay. So there's nothing?
No.
Okay. We can approve it just as it is, without a four.
Yeah.
Did I get it all?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think you did accept it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand, please. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion, it passes unanimously. And thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, and please extend our good luck and fortune to the people that are making all these changes in their lives.
Thank you very much.
That's a very, very nice cottage colony that they have built and maintained over the years, and it's been a real addition to the forest business of the Weers and of Laconia.
They've been there for quite a while. They've been there since the '70s.
Yeah.
And they're approaching 80 years old now, so they're not ready to stop making beds and cleaning dishes and toilets and everything else.
Very hard work, but they've done an exceptional job, and please convey to them our appreciation.
I will. Thank you.
My family used to rent some cottages, and man, it's at work.
Oh, boy.
It's just, it's constant all the time, not only getting to people and getting them out, but it's a very, very hard thing. Application PL 2016-0015 SP, Amendment, Provincial Road, Apple Ridge Apartments, waiver for the request of underground utilities. We understand the applicant's asked for a continuance?
They have. They've asked for a continuance to the April meeting.
And so that we will extend that. Should we do the application acceptance now, or wait till then?
I think my thought is, I thought the same thing, but let's wait on everything, is my thought.
Okay. Till date certain, and that will be April 5th?
Yep.
April 6th, 5th, 2016. Thank you. Did, we want to discuss at this time?
Yeah, so, and I apologize, I meant to make copies of this for you. I can pass this around. The application that just got continued was for a waiver request for underground utilities per our subdivision and site plan regulations. Underground utilities, when put in by the applicant, new ones, need to be put underground. We seem to have, be having kind of some trouble with this, with some developers. This is the third time in probably the last year or so, this one that I'm passing around, that this has kind of become an issue, and at the city's end, we're trying to figure out if this is the developers that are not doing this after approval, or if it's Eversource. And we're kind of in conversation. The picture that I'm passing around is the Lilac Valley subdivision. For those of you that are familiar with it, it's past Gilbert Block down the road. They too have installed, in this case, three telephone poles worth of above-ground utilities as the power goes into the property. So I guess my thought is, number one, is this enough to grant a way, to ask, to require them to submit a waiver request as well? The difference being that the one you had before you tonight was interior of the site, very obvious, you know, it kind of came out of the ground and went across the site. This one is coming from existing above-ground utilities and going three poles in. To me, it seems, you know, three, if it was one pole, that's one thing. This is three poles worth, it's probably about 500 feet or so. I guess I want to make sure that my interpretation, or our interpretation as we move forward, is correct in that these folks as well should be coming forward for a waiver request, number one. And number two, kind of letting you know that this seems to be an issue that's cropping up a little bit more often, and something that we may need to address on a larger scale.
What was the genesis of requiring utilities to be placed underground?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure. It was on the books when I came here in 2004.
So it's been on the books for...
For at least that long.
Southdown, Long Bay, or all...
Southdown, Long Bay, they're all underground.
All subdivisions have been underground.
It's primarily, it's a reliability issue.
Yes.
It's an aesthetic issue.
Yes.
I don't know about maintenance. I don't know if it affects maintenance, but clearly, if it's underground, there's less opportunity for, for things to fall on it and break and disrupt the circuit.
It prevents the power companies from having to trim back the trees.
So given all of those things, I'm not, I'm not certain why they would want to put any part of it above ground, except for cost.
I had a very brief conversation with folks at Eversource, and there has been some turnover there, and this person did, and honestly, I'm not going to be able to remember his name, he did caveat the comments he was telling me by saying he'd only been there for several months, but it sounded as if there was a concern on Eversource's part about the reliability and maintenance, and the comment, and again, this was just kind of in passing, you know, it sounds like we'll be setting up a meeting with them coming up, but the comment from him was that with the power lines underground, with the power lines above ground, if there's a break, it's visual, they can see where that break is. If there's a problem with the line underground, they cannot, at this point, pinpoint where that problem may be along the line. So I think that's a concern of theirs. I don't know what, what other concerns are. And it's kind of, the way that we've kind of been hearing about this is, you know, we talked to the developer, and the developer, or so far, this is how it's played out, the developer says, "Well, that's what PNA, Eversource has told us what to do, and this is what they wanted." My conversation with Eversource was, "No, no, this is the decision of the developer. We just go and, you know, he tells us what to do." So I'm not sure what's going on.
Isn't it Eversource that doesn't want to bury Northern Pass?
Well, I don't, I don't know about...
I mean, it's the same kind of technology, it's the same, the same issue.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a cost factor, too. So I, so I don't, I don't know what the issue is, but I guess, you know, you know, from my point of view, where we're in the Weers, looking at, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get power lines in the Weers underground, you know, it seems silly for us to, to kind of be, you know, not requiring them to be underground when we have the opportunity to, because who knows, five, you know, 10 years, 20 years down the line, we may be asking for, you know, the taxpayer may be paying for these to be underground, so. So in this particular case, the Lilac Valley, with the three poles coming off the street, is that significant enough that we need to ask them to come back for a waiver request, too, do you think?
I have a question.
Yes.
Who's policing it? Because I looked at, I looked at this one, and they just put them up, and they didn't care whether somebody said they had to be underground or not. They just put them up and kept running on going.
So are...
Who's going to police it?
Are, we have site inspectors out in the field that, that did find out about these in both cases. It wasn't the developer that came to us and said, "Oh, whoops, we made a mistake." The city found it because of our site inspections in both cases. So it is being policed by the city.
Okay.
Yep.
Because what they did was a mess.
Yep. So it looks like, it looks like I'm getting several head nods, saying, "Yes, this needs a waiver request."
We have, we have a regulation. It's solid.
Yep.
We require developers to follow it.
Yep.
And here, the city has, has led with substantial investment. You look downtown, years ago, there was a substantial investment to put power lines and things underground for exactly those same reasons, for safety and aesthetics. And we've required of all developers, and just my feelings are, my personal feelings are, is that because somebody has done something, and they come in and said, "Whoops, we've done something," and it's against your regulations, and it's against the site plan regulation, that doesn't mean that we say, "Okay, don't do it again." Who's got that photo?
Right here. So we're going to ask them to come in for a...
They are asking to come in.
They're asking...
They're making an application for the board to grant a...
No, no.
Two separate ones. So the one you have tonight?
Yeah.
We basically called them up and said, "You need a waiver request."
Why would we give them a waiver?
Well, that's up to you guys.
No, I'm saying, you know, you granted their approvals based on them putting it underground.
Right.
Which they didn't do, so now they come back and, "Okay, we'd like a waiver." Seems to me, you'd stop the project and say, "Nope, correct that problem, because that was the original agreement. So until you're ready to correct that, we're not moving forward on anything."
So, so we can't talk about the one that asked for a continuance tonight? We can't talk about that specific one? But typically, what we do with any developer, and we've been encouraged to do this from, from kind of all facets of the city, is the answer is never just "no." The answer is, "Here are your options." So, you know, the options that we gave this particular developer was either fix it, come into compliance with what you were approved, or you need to submit a waiver request for...
So, but doesn't that promote the next guy to do the same thing?
Well, it's going to depend on how you vote, you know? I mean, that, that will set the tone, so, yeah, yeah.
And why we're having this discussion this evening about this one is to educate.
Right. And to let you know that this is now, you know, if, if you guys want to see this one come into Lilac Valley, which is a little bit different, because again, it's coming off the street, which is, you know, the other ones have been full in the site, you know, hopefully you guys have driven up to the Apple Ridge, you saw that was within the site, within the parking lot. This one's a little bit different, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys wanted me to enforce it the way that I have been enforcing it. But this is the third one in the past year, so this is, you know, this is something we may be seeing...
What did you do in the, what did you do in the other two cases?
In the Apple Ridge, in the Christmas Island case, I think we did deny the waiver request. Yep.
Okay.
So now we've got the one on the table tonight, and this potential one coming in probably for April.
And where is this exactly?
If you go past Gilbert Block?
Yeah.
And you head down almost toward Belmont, it's right there, right before you get to the brand-new kind of multifamily development in Belmont there.
And did we just find out about this on February 12th, when you took those pictures?
We did just find out about this one. The Apple Ridge one, we found out about in November.
Okay.
This one, we just found, well, it probably wasn't, it was probably back in January we found out about this one.
And do we know who did it? Was it, do we know how it was done?
We do. And actually, coincidentally, it's, it's the same contractor that's doing Apple Ridge.
Different developer.
Different developer, but same contractor.
Same contractor.
Yep.
And is it the same song and dance? Eversource told me to do it?
Yes. Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Well, we've accomplished our purpose. We've educated and...
Yep. So I will let these folks know that they, we need to have a waiver from them as well, so, okay.
I'll put it underground.
Because actually, the other one up on Apple Ridge, there are poles down the road, and then it goes underground.
Yeah, and the poles down the road were existing. They did upgrade them, so they replaced one pole with another, but it wasn't a brand-new set of wires, whereas everything interior of the lot is brand-new, and so that's what needed to be underground.
Those buildings are gorgeous, by the way. If you haven't had a chance to drive up there to see them, they're gorgeous, the two of them. One's going to be used for the college-focused, and the other one's going to be for market-rate one and two-bedroom units. Excellent. Let's move on here, then, to application acceptance. Application PL 2016-0016 SU, Provincial Road, MBL 482-160-1, a two-lot subdivision. This is for, just for application acceptance. Does staff represent that the application is complete and ready for the TRC process?
Yes, it is.
Is there any question of staff? Then I'd ask for a motion to accept the application.
Sure.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Excellent. Seconded any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, and it will be scheduled for a public hearing on April 5th, 2016. New business, reappointment of Hamilton McLean. Do you get an Esquire, or honorable, or anything now that you work for the state, you know?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure. As Planning Board Representative to the Lakes Region Planning Commission, I'd ask for a motion to make this appointment?
I'll make the motion that we make.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made, seconded any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Where are you left?
Thank you very much, again. Under all business, the discussion of addition of the back language for the wetlands and water quality ordinance, this will be continued to April 5th? Do you think it will be April 5th, or do you, do they want?
Yes, I do think so, yep.
Okay.
I think they wanted to wait till folks were back.
Yeah.
So we had a full board, yep, yep.
That's very, very good.
Yep.
Then moving on to reports. Planning Department report?
Yep. So I think everyone has heard that I've submitted my resignation. My last day here will be April 5th, so I will be at the Planning Board meeting in April. And I just wanted to pass on to you that my position reports to the city manager, so he is working on a transition plan, and will be making the hiring of whoever's in my position, so.
Be careful of that.
I don't know. I don't know.
I have a question.
But I'm sure, as he has details, he'll pass them on.
Do they have to put this position out to bid, or can they...
Post it.
Can they, can they approve someone that's within the system?
As any public position, it has to be advertised publicly. Yep, yep, so.
But under the city form of government in the state of New Hampshire, it's the city manager that is directly and personally responsible. He solicits input from anyone, from the council, from planning, anyone.
So Scott Myers could sit and listen to us, and we say we're happy with what is going on right now? Why change it?
Well, except Shannon's leaving.
No, I understand that, but...
We don't have slavery here.
That was outlawed, right?
Counselor?
Yes.
Well, depends on what part of the country you're in.
No, just the point being that under town, in New Hampshire, the towns are administered one-way. A city with a strong city manager, he has all the direct and personal responsibility. And he, he lives by his decisions.
I would hope that the city manager would listen to anybody who wanted to give him some input about what the future of the city is, and what the planning director should be.
And no, he's a very open person. He's very easy to...
And he's very accessible, but yeah, it's his decision, and if you don't like it, tough.
I also wanted to update you on a couple of things. I think a few of you have actually come in and talked to me about the Langley Cove project, which is great, that offer's still on the table. If you want a briefing kind of of that project, and where it stands, and kind of the history, which is 10 years in the making, please come in and do that. We hope that they are going to be submitting soon for the final review, and that you will be seeing that plan set shortly, so that's coming up. Also, wanted to talk to you real quick about some DOT projects that are coming up. We heard just last week, I guess, that the DOT is planning a paving project of the bypass area and some of the on-and-off ramps. And I must say, although I sat through that presentation, I was multitasking and trying to get some work done while it was going on. So I don't know, you know, David, or if you have any more information about that.
Well, it's going to be over two years, and what they're going to try to do is get the ramp situation, they've separated out the ramps as opposed to the improvements to the road.
Mm-hmm.
And they're going to treat them separately, so they're going to hopefully have the roads complete by the end of this coming summer, and then the bridge is complete by the end of next summer.
Right.
But there is going to be some glitches, there's going to be some stop-and-go traffic. When they're doing some of the ramps, you're going to have to come to a stop at the bottom of the ramp before you head out onto, onto the road. But it, you know, it seemed to me like it was a pretty cohesive project that they were engaged in. The guy talked like he knew what he was talking about. Is it just the ramps, or is it the roadway? No, it's the roadways, too.
Bypass bridges.
So they're going to repave and do the ramp. Yeah.
There's a project which they're also going to be doing in that part of the world, too, on 106, as it heads to Belmont. They're going to be widening the road down there. There's a severe safety issue. They're going to be widening it and adding turn lanes in there. So lots are going to be taking place down at that end of the world.
Are they going to bury any power lines?
The other thing that I do know about, because DOT has talked about this for a little bit, is they are going to be working two, on two railroad bridges in the Weers. There's the railroad bridge that, that Route 3 passes over the railroad, I should say. So it's not necessarily a railroad bridge, it's a bridge over the railroad that...
There are two bridges there. It's always very confusing. The bridge that you think about is over the channel.
Right.
This is not that bridge. There's another one.
Over the railroad, right. So that will be replaced, and that's, right now, they're engineering it, that won't be replaced for a couple of years. But the other issue on the table is there's a pedestrian bridge that goes to the Winnipesaukee Market Place, over that railroad area there, and that bridge, I'm sorry, not the pedestrian bridge, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about something else. There's a vehicular bridge past that, that pedestrian bridge. That's only seasonal. It's only open in the, I'm going to get this wrong, in the winter, because...
It's only open in the summer.
In the summer, because the access is restricted down by the pier and the docks in the summer, because the railroad runs, and there's a lot of traffic and stuff. But right now, the DOT is planning to remove that vehicular bridge, and so this is something the city's going to want to stay on top of, and let DOT know whether or not that's the right decision for the city or not.
Just plan to remove it?
Remove it, yep, versus...
I recall that being part of their presentation when they came and told us about the railroad.
It's a different project number.
Is this some, I think we're talking about the same...
So there's two bridges in the Weers.
Okay.
Yep.
So...
If they're going to...
Did I miss something? Have they not been before the city yet about the vehicular bridge?
The City Council? I don't, honestly, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Because I don't remember, but I'm old and senile.
I wonder, too, if they only talked about the first bridge, and not the second one.
Oh, you're old and senile, then.
Maybe what I can do is I can bring in informa, more, some more information on that, because we do have a packet through the, the state, actually, it's through LRPC, and the Transportation Altern, Transportation Advisory Committee that the city participates in.
I'm trying to visualize this. Where, where is it exactly?
Still a wooden one. It's a, it's up past the Weers, where's the beef?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's the other side of the old...
Oh, I know, it's going north, it's on the north side.
Yeah, it's on the north side.
Oh, okay.
And it's just past the old fire station.
It's on the way to Aqua.
Yep.
It's really the crepit thing.
You know, I've, I've always wondered.
Your father probably...
The train doesn't go down past the Weers, right?
Pardon me?
The train doesn't go down past the Weers.
Yes, it does.
Goes to Meredith.
Goes to Meredith.
No, 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 down past the Weers, coming south.
It does, it goes into Southdown.
Yeah.
Oh, it does, that's right.
Yeah, links all the way down to Concord.
Why do they even bother?
It, it comes into Laconia.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's quite an extension.
How often does it come into Laconia? I've never seen it in Laconia.
Ray Burton used to have it.
It comes here during Motorcycle Week.
That's it.
I don't think that's it.
No, it comes other times. I've heard it.
It comes here quite frequently.
Yeah.
You can get a ticket. You can go down to, down to the City of Laconia, and go down to the library, walk across the street to the train station, get a ticket, and take a ride to Meredith.
Just make sure you know what the schedule is. You may be sitting here for months.
I may be standing there for a while.
You can get on it, you can get on it, Meredith, and it goes all the way to Lakeport.
It's going to be a special project of the DES.
So I also wanted to let you guys know, really quick, on, on an update for the Master Plan. We have a Master Plan Advisory Committee meeting coming up next week, where we'll be looking at the final draft plan for the economics chapter. That chapter is almost complete. I am before the Conservation Commission tomorrow, presenting a draft National Resources chapter, so we'll be, we'll be finishing up that chapter as well. We're working in-house on the land use chapter, which we will rely heavily on the Sharet Report that came out probably about a month ago or so. And I will plan to have a draft of that, probably for you guys, close to the April 5th Planning Board meeting. And then, the transportation chapter is in progress, rocking and rolling. LRPC is completing that for us. They kind of specialize in transportation-related projects, so that's going to be a great fit. And we are presenting at the Rotary on Thursday, the presentation that we put on for you guys last month regarding the Sharet Report, and some of the recommendations that came out of that. And we'll be planning on doing that around the city over the next month as well, so. So we are moving forward on the report, on the, on the Master Plan. Our hope is to pull together a public forum with the New Hampshire Listens folks for late May, early June time period, where we'll be taking those four chapters out, and kind of bringing them to the community, and saying to the community, hey, you know, we've built these chapters based on a lot of the input that we've heard, from all of our outreach that we've done. Did we get it right? Are the action items what you guys were hoping for? And then how do we move forward to start to complete some of these action items? So. Did you want to mention the DOT Commissioner coming to LRPC?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to do that on my thing.
Okay, that's fine, all right, so then I am all set.
You're taking over the meeting.
Sorry. That's all I've got.
Under the Planning Commission, on Monday, March 28th, in Bristol, we moved the Commission meetings around the Planning Commission meetings. You know, the Planning Commission's made up of 30 communities here in the Lakes Region, and there are nine of them in the state. The state has a decentralized planning process, to get the planning process closer to the communities. And we're very fortunate that this evening, we're going to have the, from the Federal Highway Administration, talking about the, the $200 million which comes into the state of New Hampshire. And really, most of the projects that are done within the state, road-wise, transportation-wise, are from that bucket, that $200 million bucket. And also, that evening, we're very happy to have the brand-new Commissioner, Victoria Sheehan, of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, will be with us that evening, also talking. So Bristol, we got it close to you, Mike, so that, it's, it's hard for you to say, you know, you just turn right rather than left, and you, when you leave work, and you're right there.
I, I almost could walk, probably.
Yeah, yeah, we did that for you. We, we treat our people. But it, it should be a very interesting evening. It begins at 6 o'clock, and it's in Bristol. And if you would like more details about how to get there, but I'd, I'd highly recommend it, because most of the transportation work is done statewide. It's inputted by the Planning Commission, but it goes up there. Conservation Commission?
Yep, couple of things. So the Conservation Commission does water quality monitoring every year, in cooperation with both DES and UNH, depending on where the sampling location is, whether or not it's a tributary location. Tributary are the little streams that come into the water body, or if it's a deep-water sampling site. So they just got the report with the water quality data, probably last week, the week before that, and, and it's basically just an Excel spreadsheet. And so they're working on basically a, a report showing the trends of the water quality sampling over the past five or six years. I think it's going to be a great document. Water quality data is not something you want to look at specific to one year, you want to look at what the trend is. And so this, this will be a great document to kind of show us how our water quality is, is doing in Pogus Bay. They're continuing to work on the Black Brook Geomorphic Study as well. It's been submitted to DES. DS is reviewing the report, and has gotten comment back. So it's getting, getting to the point where it's being finalized, and probably, you would probably be ready for a presentation from them this summer, on kind of what that, what they found, and what, how that, what the recommendations of that geomorphic study were for Black Brook. Lastly, the Mill Foil Subcommittee has been working. The city received some funding from the state, again, from Mill Foil this year. I'm not going to remember the value, I apologize. But anyway, the Mill Foil Subcommittee met over the last couple of weeks to try and figure out, with the state, to figure out where best to spend that money, how to get match funds, what sort of, kind of protocol for, for cleaning up Mill Foil, targeting Mill Foil in the bay is. And, and I should say, not just Pogus Bay, but Opichi as well. And the state's philosophy is really kind of a long-term approach to the Mill Foil. So you'll probably be hearing about Mill Foil, you know, annually for the next seven, eight, nine, 10 years. It's that type of program. Eradication is very, very tough. It's more of a management program. The state's been working with towns and cities for probably a decade. Pogus Bay has not been one of the water bodies that they've been working on, so we're a little bit behind the curve on Pogus Bay. It's fairly highly infested, so it is going to take kind of a long-term management plan. But the state really has, you know, a, a good handle on what's going on, and a pretty good plan of attack. The work this year is completely going to be what's called dash work, which is diver-assisted something pull. Basically, it's pulling, there's no chemical use in Pogus Bay this year, because, of course, it's our drinking water source. And our management plan going forward is mostly diving-related activity. So as I find out more, as that evolves, or as other folks find out more and that evolves, we'll make sure to keep you guys in the loop on how that's playing out.
They do a tremendous, a tremendous job and service to the city, the Conservation Commission, really.
They really do. I tell the, the council every year, for the budget, they have like a very, they have probably the smallest budget, other than maybe the Heritage Commission, which has a zero budget. They have the smallest budget of any group, and they really get so much done with what they've got. It's really amazing.
And the grants that they get, and the participations from, from Walmart and Guilford.
Yep, absolutely.
They deserve a lot of credit.
Yep, yep.
City Council, sir?
Yeah, we, we finished up a series of four invitations to the public to come speak about a particular strip of land that basically runs along Route 3, and then out towards Guilford, for the purposes of determining what or, if any zoning changes or use changes, the City Council would like the Planning Board to consider with respect to that strip of land. The map is still up there. If you look at that, that map over there, the, the area that's highlighted in blue, coming up from Pogus, Pogus Bay, Lake Winnipesaukee, is the area that folks are looking at in terms of making some kind of recommendations or some changes. We only had a few folks who came for public input, so I was, we were a little disappointed with that.
Which area, David?
The dark blue.
The dark way up top, on the north end.
The dark blue.
Dark blue is the commercial resort zone?
That's a commercial resort zone.
If you're familiar with the zoning map.
And what, I'll say, what the mayor is concerned about, and I really can't tell you how many other city councillors are concerned about, is that that is really the last strip of commercial space that would be available to the city. And he's concerned that if we keep it commercial resort, that what's going to happen is we're going to get a whole lot of trailer parks coming in. I'm not, there's a lot, a lot of empty lots as you go up Route 3, and you can see it as you drive up, and drive up there, past the gas station. So, so I would anticipate that at our next City Council meeting, there'll be some kind of recommendation to the Planning Board, to the Zoning Task Force, to the folks who are doing the Master Plan, to consider what options we have to preserve this commercial space, in terms of a change in the zoning ordinance, a change in the use, which I probably think is the best way to approach it. But, so I would be looking for, I look forward to something like that coming from the City Council, in terms of the public hearings that were, the public invitations, they weren't really hearings, the public invitations that we had over the course of our last four Council meetings in January and February.
The, the timing's coming very good, because as we pull the Master Plan together, the Master Plan really then sets the tone, and it leads into, so that there's a lot of work that's, that's happening at the same time. Is only the only way that we can get, because there's been a lot of conversation about, a lot of those lots there remain vacant, they're used for Bike Week almost exclusively. Are there tools that you've come across in other communities where you can kind of steer the development, or kind of, say, push, but incentivize development, so it's not just a vacant lot?
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent point, you know, one that I've kind of tried to make. So there are, there are tools. The first one that we have in place is the TIF District. So the TIF District Tax Increment Financing means any redevelopment on that lot, the increase in the tax value goes into a fund, which is then spent on public infrastructure within that zone. So it's, it's, you know, the concern of a lot of folks is, well, I don't want to invest in my property, because then my tax rate is going to go up. Well, yes, your tax rate will go up, but that money, you will know that that money will come back and be invested in your neighborhood for your...
That's what they use downtown.
It is, yep.
About a 50% thing? If the tax, if their taxes go up $100, 50 go into the TIF Fund, and 50 go into the general fund?
Oh, I don't remember what the breakdown is. If it's 100% or not.
My memory says, but it's, it's, it's a way of saying to a property owner, improve the value, yes, you will pay more taxes, but I believe it's half of it goes into public improvements rate in that specific area.
So, so another tool, really quickly, if I could just add, is the 79E, which, if I can remember, I always get the 79E, and the ERZ, which is the Economic Revitalization Zone, mixed up. But in both cases, they're basically tax relief, and one is state and one is local, if I remember correctly, for investments in your property. And so, in that case, you're, you basically get kind of a waiver to your tax obligations, rather than your tax obligations being paid, but being put toward public infrastructure.
It's like an abatement.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, the, those also are incentives to get somebody to invest in commercial-related development versus...
Didn't, didn't we get some suggestions on what could be done up there during the Sharet?
We did, yep, yep. And, and I, I must say, the Sharet was not as robust as I was hoping it would be. But I do go back to the EPA report, 2007 EPA report, which although 2007 seems like a long time ago, I think is still fairly relevant, and there were some ideas there. You know, I think one of the, one of the prime ideas that's kind of been kicked around quite a bit is the idea of kind of marketplace-type infrastructure, so it's kind of open-air improvements to the lots that, that, so it can be used for commercial use, that gives the area some character and some feel, you know, it's kind of some aesthetic value, but can be used for Motorcycle Week, or a farmer's market, or an, you know, ice skating rink, or...
I think I've never seen a parking canopy. It could be used for, in the shoulder months, a farmer's market, and then during Bike Week, clear out that, and then it could all be used for vendors, or for parking, that kind of thing.
Exactly, yep, yep.
And the roof could take solar panels to generate off-peak.
Part of the, the Sharet was kind of a solar farm idea, with flat panels that could be used almost as a canopy for shade in the summer. Yeah, exactly, yep, yep.
The current owners of the drive-in are actively marketing that property to sell it also. It's on the, it's on...
So surf coasters on, for sale, and that's what, 15 acres?
Yes, that's up the road just a little, yes, it is. And the drive-ins for active, it's actively being marketed for sale, too.
They, they don't, they don't want to pay for the new technology that they would be required to use...
Oh, for the movies.
To, as movies. It's, it's just too expensive. But there's a lot of property right there, in the heart of the Weers, that could provide an opportunity for some really beneficial development, which would go a long way to making what I think Laconia, where I ought to be shooting for, is to make Laconia a year-round destination. So, and there's a lot of opportunity there. The tax, the RSAs and all of that are an opportunity that we can offer to developers, but we got to get, we got to find a, a marketing strategy. The city of Laconia needs to find a marketing strategy so that we can actively market what the opportunities are here. And, you know, with the drive-in being sold, and with all that other property right there in the heart of the Weers, you know, you could just do so many things if we could just find a way to market it and to attract people and developers to come in and say, wow, wouldn't like a year-round hotel with a bunch of markets down on the street level? Wouldn't that be a wonderful idea?
There is another current development that's up for sale now, is the seasonal mobile home facility that's on White Oaks Road and 11B. That, directly across the street from the old water slide.
Surf coast area.
That's now for sale also.
Wow, gorgeous view.
And then down on the, as you go through the channel, coming out of Pogus Bay on the right-hand side, there's two private homes there that are on the market also, right on the water. But the city is working on a project the city manager is to present to the council in terms of the main stretch of road right along from the sign down to, almost to the end, as to what can be done. And that's on the CIP, and that's an active project that they're working on. The other one is the beach study that has been done to extend the beach and rentalyze the beach, and we're hoping to redesign the docks at the same time. So it isn't that the city is just rolling our hands and saying, oh, my gosh, you know, there's actual work being focused on the infrastructure down there.
Has anybody ever proposed a streetcar that will run from the Weers down to Laconia and back?
Yeah, it's part of, in the master plan, they're talking about the connectivity that we do need, because we are so spread out, as you can see, and how to connect the different parts. It's just.
Would nobody have proposed that?
Not, to my knowledge, not in a finalized plan, but conceptually.
It was included in the Sharet recommendations, I believe, yep. And we've heard it as part of a lot of the different platforms of outreach that we've done, Facebook, the surveys, in-person, we've heard it.
Yeah, because there's too much car, and that you have to go from point A to point B, and then point B to point C, point C to point D. Car, 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 car.
Right.
Cars take parking, 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 parking.
And it just clogs up the roads.
Oh, it clogs up everything.
There used to be a trolley from Fun Spot, remember?
Yes.
That needed to go through the town.
Yeah.
It was a rubber-tired.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was a trolley like the ones in like a Gunquit.
Yeah. Okay, well, not to kill that, because it is part of the master plan thing. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
We're down to other business, and what I would suggest is that Paul Goodwin from Watermark is not here, but this is an extension. And can we act on this extension without the applicant being here?
We can, we can, yes. And thank you for going back to that. I completely forgot.
That's why I get paid the big bucks.
It must be, yes.
Do we give him a timeframe, so he has to come to the next meeting?
No, no. What he has submitted an application for, well, would you like to?
Yeah, so I don't see why we couldn't approve it tonight, which is, I think, where Warren was going. We certainly could, if we had lots of questions, ask him to come back. But it's an ongoing project, it's been approved for several years. He's had several delays, but as you've seen probably as you drive by, he's up and running once again. He's active on his building permits, and he's asked for another extension for a year in order to complete it. He's up this March, so.
So when we would extend it to March of 2017?
We would, that's correct.
Shannon, I know him well enough, I can call him, just say, this is when you have to be here.
Well, I don't wonder.
No, no, no.
We don't need him here.
He does his own presentations. He doesn't have.
No, he has submitted the paperwork, and we just need to approve it, and then.
We just grant the extension. He doesn't have to come, right?
Yeah, so if somebody wants to make the motion to grant it, if you wanted to make the motion to grant it, Jay, then we wouldn't, he wouldn't have to have him come in.
I'll make the motion that we grant his extension.
Excellent. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion's made, second and any discussion? Seeing now, I'll call the question, all those in favor, say aye? I'll raise your hand, because we're on television. Thank you. Any ayes? The motion passed unanimously, and would you, you will convey that to him.
Yep.
The important things.
Okay, let's see. Minutes, the minutes have been distributed electronically, and there are no more corrections or changes to them. I would like to ask for a vote to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2016 meeting.
Second?
First.
Oh, we need to move on.
Yes, sir, yeah. We need to do the first before we do the seconds. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Excellent. Motion made, second and any discussions? Seeing now, I'll call the question, all those in favor of approving the minutes? Thank you very much. We were all in agreement on everything tonight. This is very unusual, David.
I moved to adjourn.
I'll take that back, if you're going to, if that's what you're asking.
We actually can do that. Is there any discussion, any item that anybody would like to discuss before we do adjourn? Seeing now, then I will call for the motion to adjourn. David, would you like to do that?
I'll do that again.
Okay, then is there a second?
I will.
A motion made, second and any discussion? Seeing now, I'll call the question, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed?